For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, April 15, 2013. Come to the roll, please.
Eiler?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise to the flag.
Prohibitions to the flag under the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
I'd like to start this evening's meeting with just a quick recognition of the bombings in Boston today. Everyone is aware of that. I'd like to start with just a moment of silent prayer for those that were affected in Boston. Thank you. We have approval of the minute, special workshop session of March 26, 2013, regular session of April 1, 2013, and a closed session of April 1, 2013. No, not today. Ha. That wasn't the one. Modifications to the agenda, I would like to suggest that we modify the agenda by adding a short discussion on the city manager search under the circumstances from our last meeting. Is that okay?
Okay.
Put it on somewhere.
10C.
10C. I will do that. Yep. Thanks. No? That's a vote, right?
No, did we have a motion in a second? Who's the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought somebody already did.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the city council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Yes, my name is Chuck Dukeski and I live at 615 A Street. And my concern is the city and water study that went on, the amount of money that was paid for it, the amount of money that was paid for the new meters, and the amount of savings that we've recouped. I don't think any of that has been worth it. And now you want to come to us for another increase. I think this needs to be put before the people of Alpena, before any more increases are taking place. Because that 1.3 million we spent on those meters, as far as I can see, we do not need. And they always say, "Lost the water." Okay, I'll give you a fine example right now. You go over there by the hospital, there's a water line break right there. That's been going on since December. How much water have we lost there? That has not been fixed. And there's been an orange cone there because I've wanted rehabilitation on my hand since October, and I noticed that orange cone there in December. How much water has the city lost on that? Now, if you do raise these rates by what was in the paper, what about the people on fixed income or that live solely on social security? If they can't afford to pay this rate, what is going to be your response? Are you going to just say, "Either pay it, or we're going to shut off your water"? I mean, that seems to be the way things are going around here. You know, we're getting pinched by the state for either higher gas tax or higher registration on your vehicle, and now we're going to get pinched by the city for a higher water rate. Didn't we just have a 10% increase on the water rate not too long ago after we got to new meters? And now you want another increase? I don't think that's reasonable. You know, everybody wants something from the citizen. Where does the citizen get the money in return? Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Bills to be allowed. B, two mayoral appointments to the Historic District Study Committee for an undefined term Cindy Johnson and Carol Lund. C, one mayoral appointment to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016. Carol Lund. D, is three mayoral reappointments to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016. Darlene Wilmot, Paul Sabrin, and Kathy Green. E is one city council reappointment to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016, is Jessica Hatch.
Do we approve the consent agenda? Jim Diaz presented.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
This evening I have a proclamation for the annual Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, S. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, however they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the City of Alpena, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day in our community and to support efforts to protect our trees. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed by myself, 15th day of April. Okay, report of officers.
The financial report is through March, and the revenue expenses should be at about 75%. Revenue is running about 85% in the general fund, which is 10% higher than what we prorated it. And then our expenses are about 71%, which is 4% under, so that's right where we want to be. And as we worked on the budget, we think we will come in with even less as far as expenses, so hopefully we'll come in with a healthy fund balance again. We will present the projected budget for fiscal year 13-14, the first meeting in May, so there will need to be a lot of discussion on that. There's good news and bad news. The bad news is we're still deficit spending. Need to find a way to get that to come down. Our health insurance costs continue to go up in the double digits every year. On the good side, our tax values did not fall as steeply as last year, and our pension came down slightly. And then, I think there was one other good thing, but I can't remember what it was.
The health insurance.
Oh, the people.
Well, the fact that we changed the policies, and also we went to a cafeteria plan that we should see savings here, at least this first year, then it's going to, of course, all depend upon what the rate increases are. And we are working on a number of different avenues to try to keep those down from what they have historically been the last few years, where they've generally been in double-digit increases.
And then we did a slight increase in state revenue sharing. So, very small changes, but maybe it's on the cusp of something good where we can finally get out of that slump. So, we'll try to get you that budget as soon as we can, probably the last week in April, so you have a little bit of time to look at it. We still have a few unknowns, like the EVIP with the state, not sure what they're going to require. They do make different requirements every year. And then our personal property tax revenue, they still don't have all the laws on what they're going to do and how they're going to handle that. Is there any questions on the budget?
I would offer that I went to the EVIP presentation at the MML, and I'd be happy to bring you the information that I received.
Okay, thank you.
There was big uproar about it, so I assume it's important.
Yes, it is. I just need a receiving file if we're good.
So moved.
Got it.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Okay, bids this evening, sand and aggregate.
On March 12, 2013, the city received an open bid for providing the city with sand and aggregate throughout the next two years. This is something we do bid out every two years for council policy, and it basically provides a stockpile of stone materials in our DPW yard. It also, if we need delivery to any place in the city, it is for that same price. Bid documents were sent to various firms, plus posted on the city's website, and three bids received, as noted in there, and I'm not going to read through all those individual numbers. But, based on the bids received, as my recommendation as city engineer that we award the aggregate bid to specification stone products for the as-bid unit prices. The material is usually delivered and taken to stores or charged to the project at the time of use when delivered to the project site. As such, the delivered price of specification stone products is the lowest cost to the city. There were some others that were a little lower if we picked it up at their site, but overall, the delivered price for the materials we used the most was lost to specification stone, and represents the best interest of the city.
Quick question. Have we used them before? I don't recognize them.
Yeah, yes. They're basically, it's the quarry that sits right next to the DPW out there on Long Lake Avenue.
Did it used to operate under a different name?
Well, it was, well, it was a pit, but another contractor bought out the pit and the specification stone transport that we utilize. I move we award the city's aggregate bid to specification stone products for the as-bid prices.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, under Communications and Petitions, this evening we have Adopt a Beach Project. Sixth grade students from Thunder Bay Junior High School have a presentation for us on their results.
Good evening. We're very excited to be here tonight. I'm Cheryl Mack, and a sixth grade teacher at Thunder Bay Junior High. With a group of my great students, obviously not everyone could be here this evening. There's some girls who stepped up to take on the challenge and have spent some extra time working on this. I'm going to let them take away and do the majority of the presentation. Just to give a quick word, we did this project through the GLSI, which stands for the Great Lakes Stewardship Initiative. You have a packet of information there that details our project and then some other projects in the area. The northeast Michigan hub of the GLSI, we're a regional network, we're schools that work together, and the purpose of the project is to integrate community, government, schools, together in learning projects for the benefit of the community. So we feel this one definitely qualifies, and I'll let the girl tell you about it.
Mayor Walagora, city council members, thank you for having us tonight. I am Savannah Thompson.
Olivia Luschinsky.
Mackenzie Siegel.
Beth Romell.
Taylor Feltor.
Tonight, we are proudly representing Team 6A Thunder Bay Junior High. We appreciate the opportunity to share some very important information with you. Adopt a Beach is an alliance of Great Lakes premier volunteer program, using Great Lakes as a rich, living ecosystem, its own right as starting point for instruction while emphasizing hands on real-world learning. The goal of our Adopt a Beach service learning program is to move beyond cleaning and coastlines and stopping damage, debris, and pollution from ever being a problem. To accomplish this, adopt a beach teenager with litter and record their findings on litter items, they also conduct beach observations and test-based testing to determine the potential pollution problem. This information is entered on online system that can be accessed by schools, volunteers, and the general public, and can be used to make real-world positive changes for our ecosystem This past September 21st, our science classes volunteered our time as part of the National Adopt a Beach Program through the Alliance of the Great Lakes by participating in the Great Lakes Coastal Cleanup and Monitoring Day. All sixth grade students in Mrs. Mack's science classes visited one of the following area beaches, Michigan U.S. Beach, Blair Street Park, Thompson Park, Starlight Beach, and Bayview Park. While there, we took water samples, measured water currents, tested for bacteria levels, collected wildlife data, and recorded the weather conditions. Another important aspect was our beach cleanup and litter monitoring. We know that the city of Alpena works hard to maintain clean beaches. However, due to the actions of some beach visitors, we found some shocking results. At all Alpena area beaches combined, we picked up nearly 2,000 cigarette butts and over 300 pieces of food-related trash. We found over 800 pieces of cigarette litter on Starlight Beach alone.
I'm Mackenzie. I'm here to inform you of the problems that littering has caused, and also some shocking information. 4.5 trillion cigarettes are picked up each year, and 36 increased over the past 10 years. But 50% of that cigarette litter can be stopped by educational science. And that 50% can save an animal's or even a young child's life. Because when human or an animal eats a cigarette butt, it can cause suffocation, starvation, or poisoning. Their lifespan is three to four days. But the cigarette butts are non-biodegradable, so someone has to clean them up. The U.S. spends $11.5 billion a year on beach cleanups. If people would just throw away their garbage or put a cigarette butt in a receptacle, then we can put that $11.5 billion to things that are harder to put money to, like our education. I can't spend all night talking about the problems that littering causes, so I highly encourage you to check out these websites, www.cigarettelitter.org, which talks about some other problems, and www.kimercabeautiful.org, which talks about how different places in America are country clean, and solutions you're going to learn from our next presenter's face.
Now that you know about the danger of litter, especially from old cigarettes, we hope you will consider some of the following solutions. We think an important part is education. Putting up public service announcements, signs at the beaches, explaining to citizens about the damage that litter can cause to a coastal ecosystem is a first step. We can even have a contest to find the best sign to put up at all the beaches. Another option is to increase the amount of trash cans and paint them a bright color so they are more noticeable. All beaches had a fair amount of food-related litter. Hopefully, that could be reduced with an increase in trash cans. Many students would like to see increased ticketing for people who litter. We understand that the city police are busy, but these people who litter are not only hurting the environment, they are breaking the law. Lastly, to combat the cigarette butt problem, we propose that the city provide and install outdoor cigarette receptacles. We do not support smoking, but feel that the cigarette litter problem is so overwhelming that providing the outdoor cigarette disposal unit should be considered. We recognize that some of these changes are easier to implement than others. It is our hope that you consider our ideas and that we can work with you to make positive changes for Alpena beaches and wildlife. We would like to be able to help on any future beach projects the city wants to pursue. Again, thank you for your time tonight. We hope that we will have the chance to turn our ideas into action.
Don't go too far. Knowing that you were coming, I took the liberty of asking staff to write up a certificate of our appreciation from the City of Alpena. In recognition of the efforts of over 150 students from the Thunder Bay Junior High School, on September 21, 2012, you began studies and project on the Lake Huron shoreline habitats. Through your learning, you will foster valuable partnerships benefiting your school, Alpena area communities, and healthy Lake Huron ecosystems for many years to come. Your research is a perfect example of place-based education principles in practice, as you prove that when schools and communities work together, they produce powerful partnerships that are beneficial to all. Through coordination with the Great Lakes Adopt a Beach Program and partnerships with more than 10 other organizations, including the City of Alpena, you have improved over one and one-half miles of publicly accessed shorelines in the U.S. 23 Heritage Route, including Bayview Park, Thompson Park, Blair Street Park and Pier, Starlight Beach, and the Michigan U.S. Park. The City of Alpena recognizes that your project is more than just a beach cleanup, so it is with great pride that I present you with this certificate of appreciation on behalf of the City of Alpena. Thank you. And as far as your suggestions, I'm sure Rich wasn't just doodling back there, he was probably taking as many notes as I was. And so I would, just, I don't think you need any specific direction unless you feel that you do, but to look into what the class has presented and bring that back to us. Sound reasonable?
And I think we can make sure we let that class know what we came up with and what we're able to do. So we'll definitely get back to you guys.
Okay, next up is B, the Huron Humane Society Annual Report.
Is there anything here?
Was it a mailing?
Nope, I talked to them, and they forgot. Do you want me to just read the letter?
Read the note.
Where are we at timewise, as far as the timetable? Do you want to have them, they'll need to be here before our next meeting?
No, we don't normally tell you guys right now about the budget, so we've just included it. But they wanted to give a little bit of a report.
They usually come mass. Usually five, six of them.
And we did this about two meetings ago, so maybe they forgot. Do you want me to read the letter?
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dear City Council members, I'm writing to request funding to be considered for the Huron Humane Society of Alpena in the same amount budgeted in 2012 of $14,000. With the support of the City of Alpena, the Huron Humane Society will continue to take stray animals from the community. The HHS vaccinates all animals on intake to promote a healthy shelter environment and to ensure the health and safety of the citizens of this community. The Huron Humane Society will continue to educate the community on the importance of spay and neuter, continuing to make sure all animals that are adopted from the shelter are altered. The Huron Humane Society continues to go into local schools and teach children warning signs of animals that are aggressive to protect them from injuries. In addition, we teach the proper care of animals, including a pet care and training DVD with each adoption and presentation. Senior outreach is also a focus, enriching the lives of seniors in our community by both visits of tender care and having seniors visit the shelter once a month to socialize the animals in our care. I want to take this opportunity to thank the council for their support, both in the past and in the future. Natalie Francis, Shelter Manager for the Huron Humane Society.
And we have the complete budget in our packet pretty much. Okay, and then 10C would be a discussion on the city manager search. As you're aware by now, the storm caused us to cancel all of last weekend's meetings. And so basically, I just postponed everything because it seemed like it was a logical decision to make. Since then, over the weekend, I had a short notice, an announcement from our consultant that our two candidates from downstate will be unavailable for what seems to be very professional reasons, is to not be able to make it on Friday in time for any type of meet and greet on Friday. I'm under the impression that they will travel on Friday, but very late, more than likely coming in downpeter around 9:00 or 10:00. So that kind of gave us a window to deal with. Frank suggested that we, just because of how late they might be coming in, that we push the interview process back, and then basically left it up to us to discuss as to whether you want to, you know, continue with the idea of having a meet and greet possibly in the morning on Saturday prior to the interviews. Personally, I'm kind of okay with not. I mean, something that didn't work, didn't work. I'm not so sure I want to try and push something into one complete day. There was a suggestion earlier as far as, and it's something that I kind of put out once before when we were discussing as far as the 50-minute timeline for the candidates. I certainly don't have a problem extending the interview, each individual interview. To me, 50 minutes seems really short for someone you've never met before, regardless of whether you had a meet and greet the night before. So we can play a little bit with that timetable, and it's basically just open for discussion as to what you might like to do. They will all be here Saturday, just not Friday. So, I don't know where you guys are at.
I would have no problem whatsoever extending the times on Saturday at all, as far as, you know, something early in the morning meet and greet and such. I don't really see that we need to just try to cram something into that. I'd rather see the interview times extended myself.
And, well, I'm sorry, but, and we will come back around. I just wanted to remind, I guess, everyone and council that when we initially made the schedule, we started at 9:00, and it was kind of because there were five. And then we lost a candidate within that first week, and so now we're down to four, and so, you know, I'm suggesting we might start a little bit later in the morning than 9:00.
Wouldn't we be lengthening the amount of time we have with them, so that, do you see what I'm saying? If we had five and we were planned an eight-hour day, now we have four, but we want more time with each of them, would we not still need an eight-hour day, especially if we have a lunch break?
Well, we had, we had a nine o'clock start, and that was a half-hour discussion. We went to 9:30 would be the first interview, and then we went for hours. So it was 10:30, because we just added in that ten-minute break. So it was 10:30, and then 11:30, and then, and then a break.
The last one was 1:15.
So we were going to be done at roughly 2:15 the last time. So if we, well, what if we... So we started at the same time and left 90 minutes. Is 90 minutes too long?
We don't have to use it all.
We don't have to, but...
I don't think so.
The only thing is if you set a time for somebody, you know, just if you're done half hour early, whether that person is there or not, within the building.
Whether they're physically here and...
Well, it's easy to find things to talk about because we need to talk about each one anyway. Might be a nice time for a discussion about what we just heard.
So 9:30 to 11:00, 11:00 to 12:30. Half-hour break, one...
I guess I would like to see a few minutes between...
Well, if we set 90 minutes for each person, but in that 90 minutes, the end would be, you'd have 80 minutes of interview, 10 minutes. We would have 10 minutes before the next interview.
We can give our, we can fill a little break in between there. And I would kind of have the mad sentiment with the meet and greet, part of the purpose is to give them a relaxed environment. Well, they're going to be nervous wreck before their interviews. I'm sure they'd much rather be running through what they want to say than trying to socialize. I don't think they would get a lot out of it. I don't think we'd learn a lot from them about it. If you guys are on to just start the same time, let's send them out a little bit and give ourselves a little bit of a break in between.
Because after, yeah, we would have to at least start at the same time because if we're going to add that much time on to them, that would be an 80-minute interview with a 10-minute break. Puts you at 9:30 to 11:30, or I'm sorry, 9:30 to 11:00, 11:00 to 12:30, half-hour break, one to 2:30, and 2:30 to four. And then if we have a half-hour discussion afterwards, let's just say we're going to be a full day.
Now, if there's somebody you want to come back for a second time, we do. And will that take place the next, the next weekend? We've all set aside, you know, we'll have set aside three weekends. Is there a way to maybe get that all done this weekend?
I guess I hesitate to say how it might go, but that's even something that we can discuss. Not only amongst ourselves, we'll know more obviously after the interviews are over. So after the interviews are over, we have a brief discussion as to how we feel about the interview process. If we're at two, let's just say theoretically we're at two people, those two people will still be here, so it'll be easier for us to establish a day where they'll be available and will be available at that time. Because if right now I say, well, then let's just schedule the following Saturday or the following Monday, then we're going to be back and forth all week with them and us, and we don't know which one of them it is.
Right.
So I think it would be safe to say that after we're done with the interviews, we'll be more comfortable with saying, let's check the schedules of number one and number three and go from there, if that sounds feasible. We don't have to, I don't think, establish it now.
I think we can kind of play that by year. And we can always have them, we could always get together with them Sunday morning or Saturday night if we really want to.
That might be nice.
It very well could be.
Might be nice for them, too.
I have to have 18 hours, though. I have to have 18 hours, so I can't call a special meeting on Saturday afternoon to say, we'd like to have a meeting with you again on Monday. It's all open meetings, so we can't interview a guy a second time or bring him back for something that I can't advertise to the public within an 18-hour window.
We can probably put in, you know, a notice out to have Saturday and Sunday, if you want to do that. You know, put the notice out now, tomorrow, for Saturday and Sunday. And if you don't have Sunday, we cancel that. That's always a possibility.
That would be really nice for the candidates, because I, you know, this is a long haul for a lot of people, of course, some of them, not everybody, but...
Well, if you had a consensus at the end of Saturday that you knew who you wanted to make an offer to, you wouldn't have to have Sunday.
Right. And I don't think there are any written, there's no written documents for canceling a special meeting within a certain period of time, is there? I know the setting part, I don't know the cancellation part.
No.
So I could cancel a meeting on Saturday that's supposed to take place on Sunday?
Just let the media know so they can tell everybody right now.
The only thing you'll need to do for those from out of town, especially the two who have a distance, is if you're talking about them staying a second night, that you find out if that's available for them before, you know, you start setting those plans.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, like I said, I wouldn't want to presume that they're going to stay here Saturday night and expect that, not knowing whether they're going to, I mean, it's a little bit of a catch-all, not knowing whether they're going to already plan to stay here Sunday night, or if we ask them to and then we don't need them. We've kind of...
If you reserve Sunday and they can do it, then we're prepared. If they can't, it's not ideal.
Then we work it out then.
And then we can work it out.
Yeah.
I think we should make the effort to get it done in, you know, a sizable amount of time, for them as well as for us.
Yeah, that makes sense, because there's no particular reason. We're going to kind of know what we want to ask, maybe. And I like to, everybody likes to sleep on things, so, but I will be able to, even if it's the next day, so there you go. Why don't we do that? Why don't we expect to do that? So that would be calling a special meeting at 9:00 AM on this coming Saturday, whatever that date is. And then a, and then calling a special meeting on the following Sunday afternoon? Early afternoon, late morning?
Anything, late morning might make better sense.
I think late morning would probably make more sense just because...
Then they can get home.
You're talking 11:00, 11:30. They might have five hours to drive.
Yeah, then they can get home before dark, so 11:00.
11:00 on Sunday? The other thing was the order. I'm going to, because Frank is negotiating with, not negotiating, but for lack of better terms, he has more contact with the individuals than I do, and he will know, he will know by Friday when they're coming. I hesitate to make a list. We didn't make the list and order the last time Frank did, and I would just leave that in his hands as well. If somebody tells him, hey, I want to have my interview, and then I got to get out of here, he can, I just leave that up to him to put the numbers in, to put the individuals into these time slots, if that makes sense? Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
And then the third thing was longer than I thought. The third thing would be on Saturday, we would expect to go, because there was questions as far as the contract. The consultant had asked us to have a contract ready, which only makes sense, so we don't have a whole lot of issues with the contract scenario once our individual is chosen. I would expect to discuss that in closed session on Saturday after our interviews and discussion. So we have interviews, discussion, we'll go into closed session. Bill will present, and any questions and discussion we have as far as the contract itself. Have I missed anything? Okay.
I do have a question. Do I don't have a, do I have a list of the final questions? The last one I have is draft, final draft or something like that. Is that the last time they were changed?
What I'll do is I'll, what I'll do if anybody's not comfortable with which ones they have, if you want to just delete your emails, and tomorrow morning I will send the one that I know of to be the last one.
Okay.
Or don't delete, or just put them in a bin somewhere. I'll send tomorrow morning, I'll send what I believe to be the last. I think it was titled "Final Draft." "Final Draft Going to Print," that was what the email said from Frank.
Yes, yes, that's the last one I have.
Then I won't...
Then I'll have it.
All set, all right. No action to be taken. Oh, no, there's no action. Unfinished business, council discussion on water and sewer rate study.
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay.
You can answer them all.
There's been a significant amount of discussion in the public and coming here to us, and I've gotten a couple of emails and things. I would just like to start, any discussion that we have with the premise that, once again, I'd like us to respect the staff, that they are negotiating with the township. I want to get a lot of discussion with what we're doing with the township's agreement. That agreement is for them to deal with and come back. We've had some different questions and thoughts as far as what we, I mean, the consultants came and they gave us a presentation that I was almost a bit afraid that people would read that the next day and get a feeling that we had those three things to choose from. And there was quite a bit of discussion throughout the city that those, that we were set to have to choose one of those three things. I know from my particular standpoint, I don't intend on having to be, having to choose any one of those without some changes and some other considerations. I know that Greg has told me that staff is working on several different ideas, and it's nothing that we can come right here to council right now and say, you know, hey, I'd like to do this, or I'd like to do that, and then vote on it. You guys are working on several different scenarios, from what I understand. I would like to address the new meters again. And I don't want to come off as every time someone writes a letter to the editor, I'm going to defend it either here or in the media. But the letter to the editor after our last meeting did make a quote of sorts of us spending 4-point-some-odd million dollars on the new meters. And if either you or Mike can kind of expound on, not necessarily where this individual would have gotten that number, but where we are at with them, just clear that for us.
It all might give you the cost and where we're at with the meter program. But I think the key element here is, A, we had outdated meters. We had meters that were, well, in excess of 20 years old. We'd run several samples. We've done at least three different samples of random meters out there. We did identify that there was underreading meters that existed out there. Not everyone was paying their fair share. So, you know, we had a couple of different proposals, one from another company that was just unbelievably high. Mike Lewinsky and his company, United Waters, stepped up to the plate. They indicated that, excuse me, that they would purchase the meters, install the meters, finance the meters at no cost. There's no interest rate to the city, and the city had an eight-year payback period to pay those back. Anytime that we can get free money on a long-term payback to accomplish a task that we've been harping on, and I use that term, but requesting in the CIP, identifying that it needs to be done since 1995, here was an opportunity for us to make it happen. It is, it's not all about trying to achieve more money. There's a lot of side benefits to these meters. They're going to record the actual amount of water that people are using. They're not recording anymore. They're just recording what people are using that wasn't being recorded before. The other benefits are, is that these are real-time. I mean, United Waters can at any moment go in, pull up the history, run a log of what water has passed new year meter over the past X number of hours. The other thing it does is if there's a high use, if all of a sudden, you know, I'm used to using 1,000 gallons a month, and all of a sudden they see this spike that's just astronomical, they can identify that there is a problem. And we can have one of our technicians go out there and investigate. Is it a leak? You know, is there a pipe broken in the house and the people are going to Florida? There's a lot of different scenarios out there where those flags that come up in the meter program will tell us that there's a problem. It'll also tell us instantly if there's no meter consumption. If over a period of time there's none, and, you know, we know that somebody is living there, we've got a problem with that meter, and we can correct it. So there are a lot of other side benefits. People come in and question their meter. Before, it had to be manually read. Now, you could look at what their use is. And I believe Mike's responded to a number of customers who've come in and said, you know, why is my meter reading such as this? And Mike, I'll let you address the costs.
First off, I think the comparison of the quote that was given by the previous company was $2.5 million to do the complete meter change. We did it for a million and a half. And we, like Rich said, he explained it very well. We financed that over an eight-year contract. Obviously, we've been, we've had this contractual relationship with Alpena for 25 years. And it's been beneficial, I think, to both the city and to our company. And we want to continue and want to strengthen it. And we saw that as a way of strengthening that partnership. As far as the benefits of the meters, Rich has already explained a lot of that. The last thing that we want to do is see someone get a high bill because they had a water leak. That's not what we're in business for. We want to make sure that the water is being used efficiently, but we also want to make sure that everyone is paying for the water that they use, so that if you have one person that's got a meter that's registering low and they're using a lot of water, someone else in the system is subsidizing their use. The other thing that I want to accentuate is that the meters that we were using over the 25 years that I've been here, those meters are obsolete technology, number one. The company that was manufacturing them Badger Meter would no longer support any parts for them. And they were also going away from the meter with the outside remote. That's old technology. Technology nowadays, you want to get an actual read on the meter because there is an inaccuracy oftentimes between that remote and the meter. So we had to do something with the meters. I mean, we had to make some kind of change. And I think the decision was made that we go with the best technology to provide the best service to the citizens of Alpena. And I truly believe that's what we've done. I think we've opened up opportunities to increase efficiencies within the utility and also provide a much better service to the customers.
Do you, Mike, just since it was brought up, address the waterfall at the hospital there? Random.
That's a symptom of the problem that Alpena faces and a lot of communities face. That meter, that valve there is a 12-inch valve. It's a very large valve, one of the larger valves that we have in the system. Unfortunately, you only use those valves when there's a water main break or you have to shut the water down. In this case, we had to shut it down to allow the hospital to put a valve into their system. When we turned that valve, and it's a 1940 valve, and shut the water off, when we opened it back up, it started leaking from the valve stem. It's just a small leak, it's not a water main break. It's a small leak that comes up through the box and discharges the sidewalk. Last year, we had that problem in the winter, and it didn't create an issue because it wasn't running on the street, it was running down, across the sidewalk, into the ditch. In the summertime, the leak stopped. So we chose not to make, not to do anything with it. Unfortunately, it started leaking again. And there are a lot of valves out there in the system right now. If you look on Third Street, there's a valve... If you look on Third Street, there's a valve that's leaking on Third Street. And it's the same situation. We had to, I had to turn that valve off to fix the water main break on Third and Sheridan. When we opened it back up, it started leaking through the valve stem and up through the box. You know, another valve that's, was put in the 1940s, it probably should be replaced. But we don't have, we don't have the, the income and the revenue to, to make those kinds of replacements that are needed. And, and as, as we get further and further behind in situations like that, it's going to become insurmountable to invest the money to replace the parts that need to be replaced all at once. If you don't take off a little bite at a time, eventually, 20 years down the road, it's going to be an insurmountable task. And I think, Rich and I feel it's our responsibility to make council aware of what's impending. And it's not, it's not a good story. I think we have to look at what reality is. And, and I'm the last person that wants to double rates because I'm going to be answering to the customers.
I got your email already.
It's, but it's our duty and our responsibility to make council aware of the magnitude of the problem with the infrastructure in town. And, and it's, again, it's not something that's unusual to Alpena. I think the country as a whole is in the same situation.
Mike, just real quickly, just simplify, maybe clarify a couple points on the water meters. It's not any more complicated than it's a mechanical part that wears out. And for us not to replace those mechanisms would be irresponsible. Like anything, anything that's automated, it's going to wear out. One thing I think is lost on the public when we talk about making money on the more accurate reading is that, that's our plan to pay back the meters. It's not anything in addition or beyond that. So, now, what we're, we're hoping, and I think the jury's still out, is by getting more accurate readings, that income is going to go toward paying for these meters. So it's not anything beyond that at all. And lastly, I think the fact that we had to borrow to replace a basic mechanism of our system is probably a pretty good example that that we need to look at this, that we are in trouble as far as getting out of finance when we have bigger changes down the road.
And I guess, from, you know, the comments that the mayor made, we recognize that the, the three proposals that were put, put forward by the consultant, and even he will, he, he will agree with you. Those, those were concepts to get where you needed to be. They have to put something out on the table so that you can see where ultimately you should be. We recognize that that type of an impact to our customers, and not just our minimum bill customers, but every customer, is going to be pretty significant. Probably too significant to take, to take on right off the bat. So what, some of the concepts that we're looking at, and I don't, I'm not going to go into detail because, like I said, they are still works in progress. But we're looking at, what can we do at the bottom end to make it palatable? I mean, I think, I think we would be remiss as the public, and I'm not speaking, if we recognized, if we didn't recognize that there's a need out there. There is a need. You know, we've, we've had the lowest rates, second, third, lowest rates for how many years? And we've been very proud of that. But at the same time, we've been proud of that at the expense of our infrastructure. So, you know, we've, we've enjoyed that low rates for a long time. Now, it's, it's the point where we can't keep that up and maintain what we have out there. As, and as Sean said, you know, it's no different than, than a car. If you buy a car and you don't do any maintenance to it, eventually it's going to fall apart. And if we're not doing maintenance to our entire system, and we, we maximize what we can do with the funding available, but, you know, when you've got two or $300,000 a year to try to replace water mains and reconstruct the street that I tore up and all that, it doesn't go very well. So what we're looking at is trying to minimize that impact. You know, still, still recognize that there's a need for capital. Establish some type of a, of a operation and maintenance charge. A debt service charge. Debt service is pretty simple. This is what we owe, this is what it's going to take to pay it off. And quote that out to a, to a per thousand gallon. Look at some type of a capital charge. And then potentially some commodity capital charge. So that, yeah, maybe the bigger user is paying, is going to pay more because they consume more of it. But at the same time, make every customer ready. And there would be some type of a ready to serve charge there. And those are the numbers we're trying to assemble. So I talked to, I talked to our consultant. This is not something unusual. This is very common for once, once that gets presented, that the, the individual's community looks at how they can package it to their citizens and to the customers and still meet those needs. We may end up stretching it out over a 10-year period. We may not achieve that three and a half million dollars per year. As I told Greg, in, in our annual construction report, if you look at our actual as-bid costs compared to our budget numbers, they run about 10% under, and that's, that's going back to 1990, or 2001. We've tracked every one of those projects, and on average, we're about 10% under. So right there, 350, you take 35,000, up and down to 315,000. There are other, there are other savings. So maybe we don't achieve that full three and a half. Those are the things we need to look at. But I, I also want to take that numbers, take those concepts and photopass the consultant and get their input on them as far as if it was, you know, if we've missed anything. Make sure we've got all of our bases covered so that we're not, we're not in this boat three years down the road. The other thing that, you know, there is going to have to be inflationary increases as we go forward. We've tried to maintain that in the past. Yes, did we have some, we had some back-to-back 10% rate increases. Those were established to pay off the bonds when we did the sewer and water revolving load funds. So there, there's things out there. But I, I guess the big thing is, is that we are, we do recognize that we're, we're not going to bury the city and our residents with a, with a rate that they can't pay.
Couple things. One, one is a comment and a question. I'm not sure if it's a Mike question or a Rich question.
Whenever ours, Sam.
We just put it out.
Comment is about the meters, and it's the only thing I'll say about the meters is that one of the things the new meters do that the old meters couldn't do is that we don't need to pay some company $30,000 a year to read the meters to be able to produce the bills. So, I don't know how long these new meters will last, but at the end of every 10th year they do last, we'll be, that saves $300,000. So if they last 20 years, that's $600,000. It's chopped off what we had to pay for them. So that, that's another good part of the.
Correct. They're, they're prorated for 20 years. So there's a guarantee, 20-year guarantee, and it's prorated based on the age of the meter.
Thank you. The question is, just to get a scope of what's under the ground that's bad that we don't see and has to come out of the ground and something better go into the ground. Our capital improvement projects for the six years, we go six years at a time, current year and the next five, the sewer fund needs about $9 million worth of work, and the water fund needs 12.6 million. So, just under 22 million, and if the projects come in underbid, maybe we don't need 22 million. But assuming we're six years down the road and, and we've done all this, are we then caught up? Or is this a far longer project than?
It, it's ongoing. That, that six-year, that six-year schedule is going to just keep rolling forward. Is it going to be that 12 million and $9 million every six years? No, it's going to vary up and down depending on needs. But that, that is a six-year snapshot of what we need. It's not unreasonable. I think, you know, by his comments, that three and a half million, we would be 80 years to replace all the.
I thought that's what you said, 80 years, but I thought, I can't, I guess you can. So that, that's the scope of the thing. I, I harken back to many years ago when I was kind of a cover reporter. Apologize for the language, but it isn't my language. I asked a guy from the, I can't remember if it was Ypsilanti or Ypsilanti Township, and they had to do some massive problem because the mains were, your water pipes were breaking and stuff. And nobody wanted to pay for anything because as long as we turned on the truck and the water came out, they assumed everything was all right. And I said, well, and what, what's it going to take for people to realize? And he said, well, if you open, open the tap and a raw turd floats out, then people are going to be concerned. But until you get from pristine water to raw sewage coming out of the pipe, it's hard to sell a $22 million chunk among 10,000 people. That's, that, that's a chunk. So we're, we're going to have, we've been told, we don't, we don't want a Cadillac system, we don't need a Cadillac system. I believe the quote in the newspaper was a Cobalt, Cobalt system. But, you know, we don't want a system that isn't going to do the job either, that's going to break down underground. So these are the kinds of things we've looked at. It's been, to use a tired cliche, this city council and others, well, this city council hasn't done it. Except early new city council. Kick the problem down the road and, and brag about our low water and sewer rates. And I'm the only one that's been here for the, the last 10 years, so I've been, I've been part of the problem and not, not grabbing at this. But we've reached a point where we have to do something. Maybe we can find something in the middle where we raise the rate somewhat and do something like bonding. We'll just have to figure that out. But the, the capital improvement part of it is the part we're all choking on. I don't think anybody could stand up in a public room and say, it's not fair to charge us based on what we use. For God's sakes, what kind of a system is that? But, you know, how, how much fairer can it be? And, and nobody in, in this city that I've worked with in the administration or past councils are hard-hearted about not knowing the people we work for. We have a tremendous system for property taxes where, where we have what we call poverty exemptions. Where some people just cannot pay their property taxes, and they don't. Not every city has this. City of Alpena does, and I'm very proud of that. I don't know if we can do that for multiple million dollars of, of capital projects, but it has to be done. Nobody wants to move their business to a city, nobody wants to move their family to a city that can't provide the basics. And we're doing okay, but we're reaching a point where something has to be done. Thank you for, for the time.
Went to reiterate what Sam said a little bit first, that this process is going to go on for a while. We're obviously not going to decide this this evening. Yeah, and what I hope the community understands in the coming months, and for however long, that I hope people kind of get is we cannot maintain the water and the sewer system with the current rate that we offer. That's just the bottom line. We offer one of the lowest rates in the state, and, and we can't maintain what we have. Furthermore, if we can't prove that we're making enough money to maintain our system, we won't even get a permit to run the system in the first place. So it's not that we, we're excited to make these changes. I mean, we have to. At the same time, and this has been reiterated a couple of times, that we realize that the city residents can't afford the bill that we really need to, to put out. I can't afford that. And, and again, we're going to have to be creative and, you know, find a way to, to raise rates to give us some of the income, but not beat up our citizens. But we're going to have to make it up somewhere. And I guess I, a couple of suggestions I'd like staff to take a look at, or maybe council to sign off on. Yeah, the first being that I would like to see what it looks like to, to have half the rate increases in half the amount of time. One thing that concerned me even with the huge increase is that it's spread out over seven years. So they were saying, well, we need about three and a half million a year. We don't realize that to the seventh year. Well, you've got to average out all the shortfalls in the six years up to that. And so we really, we're going to get to that seventh year and say, yeah, we got our, our yearly money, but we're going to be so far behind. So if we have half the increases, obviously that's voted for citizens. We did in half the time, and we're going to realize some of that income a little quicker. Couple other things that, that I would look at, and and one, and the mayor mentioned we're in negotiations with township. I do think when all is said and done, that will be a better deal for everybody. And the one thing I would say is, I don't think that agreement works for the city or the township or the residents of either. So regardless of how it's negotiated, maybe that new agreement will, will ease some of the burden. Yeah, and secondly, and I, I know this is something that our staff excels at, that I know Greg excels at. Finally, we need to dedicate ourselves to find some grant money to do some of this. You know, it's been, Darby's in history with the, a lot of the improvements wasn't on our dime. You know, it was grant money. I would look at the new city manager and say, this is your first job, find us some money to make city sewer and water improvements. And you can never count on that, but I think, you know, we took that direction. You know, another thing I would be interested in, and Mike mentioned before, is that there are a couple revenue streams. You know, one, you mentioned was methane. The other, I think, was treating, I don't know, I'd never say it, but.
Septage, septage, yes.
Okay. So, if staff can maybe investigate, you know, what can we do to, to operate even more on methane and reduce those costs? What can we do to maybe treat that septage from, from other communities and bring that in? And if we can increase some of those revenues, and obviously our expenses are, are just paramount. And I think lastly, and I'm sure this is something staff would probably do anyway, is to to prioritize the projects and, and really look, is this really three and a half billion dollars a year necessary? What projects do we absolutely have to do? You know, what can we kind of back off on? But, well, it was a good analogy, but you can kind of analogize it with our energy crisis. And it's not going to be ethanol that fixes things or solar energy that fixes things. I think it's, we're going to have to look at making up that revenue a little bit here and there. So some of it from our citizens, I think's probably going to have to happen. Maybe some of it with a new agreement, some of it with some more revenue streams, some of it prioritizing. So I guess my, my task for staff is to see any of these areas we can develop and, you know, if we can reduce costs and we can get creative with methane, we can get creative with grants. I think that's what it's going to take because there is a big gap from what we need to put into the system and what we have to put into it. But I think we're all in agreement, we can't ask the citizens to fill that gap, and we can't magically fill it on our own. So, now I'd be interested and excited to see what you guys come up with, so.
If I might just comment to that, Sean. I just wanted to mention that Alpena Power was just 2.1% less than my plant last week because our power consumption is 20% lower than it was last year this time. Part of that is the result of adding a new methane engine and utilizing the methane more efficiently. And we had to get very creative with that because EPA has emission standards for engines. And we were, if we purchased a new engine, we would have been required to have an engine with emission standards that are up to date. They don't make methane engines to do that because there's just not that much demand for them. So we found an engine that was, that was actually produced before those emission standards went into effect. And we were able to purchase that and install it with a new pump. And we're pumping 90% of the flow coming into the plant with that methane-driven engine.
Yeah.
So those are kind of the things that, you know, we, we do try to work on constantly. But then there's always, there's always the things that get thrown at you that, you know, cost more money.
You have three engines or two?
We have one engine. That runs on methane.
How many engines total do you have?
We, we have one engine that runs on methane. We have a backup system, but we don't, we don't operate it. And we, and that one methane engine, along with supplementing the boiler, the boiler, we have to heat the digester contents to make it operate more efficiently. We're also using the methane to fire our boilers. So, we're utilizing the methane. If we could come, come up with an organic stream that would create more methane, then, you know, that is something to look at.
When you say organic stream, does garbage work?
Uh, waste, not garbage, but waste from, that can be segregated at the, the point where it's created. Like waste from grocery stores produced that's being thrown out into the garbage. So, that would work. That would work.
Does it got to be organic?
It has to be organic, yeah.
I wonder, and it's something I can look into from the recycling aspect, how much of a garbage stream is organic? You know, if it's worth, there might be a possibility to get a garbage.
Segregating at the community college level, you know, the cafeteria, segregating at the hospital, taking paper products and taking the organic and keeping that in a separate collection, taking recycling one step further. That's an idea that would probably work if you could get buy-in from the community.
Well, I think that's something we could all work on. And you are, I'm going to make the assumption that you would reduce the garbage costs of those entities.
I would think there would be some kind of a payback for that, yes.
Especially the school system. A lot of what they put out is going to be organic. I think that's a good example. These types of things, I think they're going to have to get established and not so much than what we check from our citizens.
To do something like that would probably mean adding something at the plant in order to grind it up so that we could get it into a form where we could put into the process, but it's doable.
So in the end, I think we've established basically that we're not in any intense rush to haste to some decision. You guys are developing different plans and working over different things and I would expect that any council members that had any suggestions might take them directly to Greg and he can follow through with Mike and Rich rather than just an event because we'll have like a three-week span before our next meeting. We'll have, you know, these different spans, so just continue to provide your input to them and they can more easily be able to answer your questions when they come. And then again, to the public as far as any questions or comments should be brought to staff would be, I think, a lot better than the letter to the editor because then you get direct standard answers and facts prior to doing that. But when you guys come back, whenever that is, and you present something to us, I mean, we're all realistic and we all understand what needs to be done. I don't want to be that council that five, 10 years from now, someone says, why didn't you guys do something? You know, you knew that, and now it's out in the open, it's been provided to us, we have the facts. We have to do something. We will do something. But as long as we can answer for specific, what those specific measures were and they're realistic and people can actually, we can expect that they'll be capable of paying the bills, I think we'll all be comfortable at the end of the day.
Is there a specific timeline that we're looking at or?
We didn't necessarily establish a timeline. We talked about getting something done.
For the budget, we just, we took a, I think we put in what, a 5% sewer, 10% of the water?
Or 10 on both.
Or 10 on both. We put an increase on those for budgeting purposes, but because this was still in flux, we couldn't really address the portion of it.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I would have expected that. I don't know why, but I would have expected that during the budget process. But the rest of this, you know, as often as you feel necessary to come back and at least let us know and let the media know where we're at with it, I think I would certainly appreciate that, just so it doesn't disappear for a period of time where we have to start rehashing facts again.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my timeline is we're going to continue to work on this. I want to get something back to council to take a look at. If not the next meeting, the one following that, you know, and we can, by that, that'll give us some time to crunch the numbers, run it past the consultant and that. And then if council takes a look at it and they say, that's good, but, you know, I think you need to tweak it here or tweak it there. We can go back, we got that. I think the key thing is as long as we have it, something in place, target by July 1, that's when we typically do our rate adjustments. That's kind of a target date to have everything finished up.
Yeah. Our, you know, water and sewer, we've said, we're really watching the levels on those in the budget, so we need to get going on that.
I think the one suggestion that we'll have to have some advanced notice on is if the council decides they want to go to monthly billing as opposed to quarterly billing, which will result in probably a bill that's a lot more handleable by everyone because you're getting that bill on a monthly basis. That will take some upfront effort on our part to accomplish that. It will result in some extra costs. So if the council is serious about making that change, as much advanced notice as we have, that will make it easier for us to be prepared for it if it happens, you know, in July.
Okay.
And as far as I'm concerned, the big takeaway for some of you who have come and been so concerned for a lot of reasons, the takeaway is it's not going to be a quick fix that puts the burden on one person or one entity or one group of people. It's a multi-pronged fix with from, and the help will come from a lot of different places, not just from the people who use the most water. So it should be all right, maybe.
Yeah, and I agree, you know, kind of commenting on what Sam said earlier about some of the past councils, you know, I'm not going to confess to other sins, I just, I agree with what you said. It's time, we've got the facts that we have to do something now. And I reviewed everything from cost of produce, the measurement of the sales, the price we're charging, and then the citizen's ability to pay are really the basic four factors that we have to consider, along with all the different aspects from a monthly bill to the minimum and the ready-to-serve charges. There's a bunch of different factors that we'll look at, we can all break those all down over the next several weeks.
Okay, new business. Fiber from the Alpena County Courthouse to Bagley Street from M32 down Airport Road.
Well, in October of 2012, the county of Alpena being the lead agency for the airport fiber project, received an open bid for the installation of the fibers from the Alpena County Courthouse to the intersection of Bagley and M32 to connect to the Merritt installed fiber line on M32 and also for the installation of fiber down, from M32 down Airport Road. Alpena County has awarded these contracts, or the contracts for these projects to the little biter Thunder Bay electric, with whom we have worked with many times and is currently the city's fiber maintenance contractor. As discussed since the inception of the project, these two projects will be split evenly between each agency and the city will be responsible for the half of each project. The section from the courthouse to Bagley Street is $27,210, of which the city would be responsible for $13,605. And the airport road section is $13,915, of which the city would pay $6,957.50. Sufficient funds have been budgeted in the wired city line item for these projects. And as IT coordinator for the city, I recommend that city council approve the expenditure of these funds to support this fiber project. This would basically be connecting the two ends from the M32 portion that we're working with Merritt to do. They're installing that portion, that's already, I shouldn't say up and running, but that's in the works right now. They're building that and we'll connect from Alpena County Courthouse to Bagley Street and then down Airport Road. Get to all the lift stations along that route for us and also for the county to connect to the airport and other county buildings in that area.
Does this include all those tie-ins?
This doesn't include all the tie-ins yet. We've actually budgeted for those next year, so we've got those in the works for next year to budget to put those in. The cemetery one, we already approved and that's by the same contractor and they'll be doing that as part of this project too.
Awesome.
Preparing us for this in the past. Oh, I moved, we approved the expenditure of funds for the fiber project after the end.
A second.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldora?
Hi. Thanks, Steve.
And resolution number 2013-7, a resolution authorizing execution of a waterways grant agreement between the city of Alpena and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for emergency dredging at the marina.
As you're aware, the city of Alpena is in line to receive up to $805,000 grant for emergency dredging at the city marina. In order to receive the money, council must sign the grant agreement and pass the resolution back and sent by the DNR. The nice thing about the grant is it doesn't require any local match, which in our fiscal light is great news. The grant also allows for up to 25% of advanced funds of the total dredging cost to help cover the cost of permits, approved plan, and cause estimates, which are being developed by the city engineer and then to be approved by the DNR. Rich is currently completing the requirements to obtain the permit, developing the plan, the specifications to put the proposed project before council and out of the bids. The anticipated timeline for this project would be sometime in June of 2013, depending on availability of dredging resources. Getting the dredging sometime in the late July or August. They're going to bump that up, try to, if there's any way possible, to start getting it done in June. No more boaters next week. I'm going to go through the marina with one of our contractors operating and just take some depth measurements. We know we can get most of the boats out. Troubles we sailboat, so we're just going to see if there's any high spots or anything that needs to be dealt with, but we'd like to get that taken care of as soon as possible and as opposed to the latest. There's 50-some communities are going to get dredging this year in Michigan, so I'm guessing the dredge is what they're going to do. We do not anticipate any major disruptions to either the seasonal or the train engine motors during this process and we're working with Thunder Bay Shores Marine to make the process as smooth as possible for the boating community. Therefore, staff would ask that council pass resolution 2013-07 and sign the grant agreement. Great question.
I can't help but notice that a little bit irony, this is on the same agenda as the water and sewer. You brought this up several years ago. It's dredging, it needs to be done, it's important. You threw out the price tag and we all said, this is never going to happen. You know, we're never going to come up with that money.
Which is true.
And we never did, it's going to happen anyway. You know, I think in this case, the state recognized that there was a real crisis and intervened a little bit. But, you know, if we maintain a little bit of faith and get creative and maybe the state will recognize infrastructure problems as well. I thought this had zero chance of happening three years ago and it's going to be a reality this summer. And that gives me a little bit of hope that, you know, we can find some other solutions as well. So thank you for staying on top of it and if anybody can get us bumped up to June, I'm sure it's you, so.
Hopefully it'll be Rich.
Give it a try.
June it is.
It'll just depend on how all the ships fall, I mean, but, you know, we'll get the boats in the water is the important thing. And this actually happened a lot, just some of the groups within the state and Great Lakes Basin, you know, through the Michigan Ports Collective, the Great Lakes Small Harbors Coalition, which is two Canadian provinces in nine states. And the guy from Travisville named Chuck May just got hammered on the building and Ports Collective hammers the Michigan's front doors to water and so eventually got tired of hearing that. We got 21 million bucks.
So we need to get that same water, you know, we need evidence.
Don, has this money been set aside already? There's no way the communities could be stuck for part of this bill, right?
No, unless we exceed it. I mean, we, and that's again, Rich and I are talking about that all the time, is how much are we going to be able to dredge with $805,000, not with a million dollars? Because the original estimate was based on some preliminary work that was done when Danny Fauquette was here. Him and I went and drilled a bunch of holes in the boat harbor to see how deep the water was. So then when it came time for the DNR to reach out to community and say, hey, how much dredging do you need? It was easy for the city of Alpena to say, this is how much we need. So we sent them that based on 2011 projections, so they threw out what they thought would be enough money to take out that many cubic yards. We know there's more than that. We assume there's more than that based on our sounding and stuff, but we're going to get it done, everything we get done. Nice part of generally that does have a hefty price tag or a match to go along with. We'll keep it in, I'm sure we'll keep it with that if we're lucky.
Okay.
You've had the opportunity to, it's a seven-page resolution, so I'm not going to read the whole thing this evening.
We're under that already. Mayor, that resolution, that agreement, that's typical boilerplate language. We signed similar agreements when we got the new docks down there.
That's what it looked like.
Some of the signage we already have in place down there. There was, Rich was telling me today, that we will have to make a new sign, similar to the ones you saw in road projects, probably not quite that big like a billboard, but say where the money came from and thank you. But that'll all be part of the plan.
Looking for a resolution? I mean, are you looking for a?
I need to. We would need that.
Motion to adopt the resolution and authorizing the mayor to sign, or to sign the grant agreement as well.
Just wanted to say, are you looking at the motion? Okay. I move to adopt resolution number 2013-07 and authorize the mayor to sign the execution of this resolution.
A second.
Is that enough?
You have to authorize.
You just say, so move.
Yeah.
So that's funny.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
You are watching All About Alpena.